All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being part of our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, can you call the roll?
Debbie Tomusko.
Present.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Bill Bear.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
He is absent, excused.
Bart Palitski.
Here.
Ron Bunkirk.
Here.
Tony DeMarco.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first set of minutes is for the meeting held May 8, 2017. Are there any comments or questions on those minutes?
Yes, if I may be recognized.
Yes.
I have a few changes to the minutes. I don't know. I went over them with Mary Jo Pryor. Should I go through them now, or? I don't know what's the best way to do this. Number one, they show me as being absent at the meeting, and yet I gave a report. So, I was actually at the meeting, so I shouldn't be shown as being absent. And then, in the, let's see, that would be page 2, under my report. I made a comment about, that I noticed on an early iteration of 2, and it goes on to say, "At a presentation with a density displayed in the park, it was stated then to not." And I just wanted to clarify that what I was saying is that I saw an iteration 2, and it showed significant building density in the park. So, if we could put in "building density," I don't know. But, and then I said, at that time, I advised Mr. Udris that that was quite a lot of encroachment on the park, and people use it and like it. But, the only change I want to make is, at a presentation with building density displayed in the park, and then, at that time, I advised Mr. Udris. Because it says it was stated then, and that was, I advised Mr. Udris. So, that mayor may not be able to be changed. And then, the only other thing is on the, let's see, the line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 up. I had asked the mayor about what we're going to do next. I mean, it says "about" this, so it's kind of cutting hairs. But, it was in terms of Issue 3 going down, well, what's the plan for what we're going to do next? Because that doesn't completely preclude us from some of the things that we're in Issue 3. So, those are just a few clarifications. I don't know, again, how much they can be made, but those are just a few clarifications for clarity. Thank you.
Anyone else? Need a motion to approve as amended? I'll make the motion.
So moved.
Second.
To approve as amended. Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Upstain.
Mary Bill Bear.
Yes.
Bart Palitski.
Yes.
Ron Bunkirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Next up is the approval of minutes for the meeting dated May 22, 2017. Does anyone have any?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
One very minor. Last page, which is page 5, third paragraph from the bottom, last line, it just needs to be clarified that that would be email instead of mail. To email, and let, send an email out to let everyone know. And I'll make a motion that we approve as amended.
Second.
To approve as amended. Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bill Bear.
Upstain.
Bart Palitski.
Yes.
Ron Bunkirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Okay, we have two presentations this evening. The first one we're going to hear from is the Cuyahoga County Department of Public Works. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mike Dever. He is the Director of Public Works for Cuyahoga County. So, sir, voting is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council President, Council members, and the administration, and the members of the public. Michael Dever, Department of Public Works for Cuyahoga County. I'm happy to come before you today to present to you some of the work and initiatives we've done here in the community over the past year. I have a short presentation, and hopefully, it's been distributed to everybody, so they have it in front of them. I have a few extra copies here, but I don't have enough probably for the entire crowd, so it's a big one. Would you like to share them? There you go, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dever, could you adjust the microphone just a little bit, so it's a little bit... There you go, thank you very much.
Sure, sure. So, hopefully, everybody can hear me. But, thank you once again. The relationship we've had with the city of Brooklyn has, I was trying to look back on the history of it, but it's been a number of years that we've had this cooperative relationship with Cuyahoga County. And I'm happy to come before you and report on the work we've done here in the community. The presentation in front of you today, first, I'm going to go over some of the storm and sanitary sewer initiatives that we've been performing for the community. And then, towards the end of it, I'll briefly touch on some of the roadwork that we've done here, and the road and bridge work, and future work that's planned. So, if you go to page 2 on the handout, and if you treat it like a booklet, because we did utilize both sides of the pages, so if you treat it like a booklet, it might be easier to read. So, that menu of services is what the sanitary sewer department does. So, if you start in the lower left-hand corner there, Storm Maintenance as requested. Develop mainline sewer cleaning. Now, these are the main lines that are located in, on your street. Develop digital video inspection. This is after we clean a sewer, we go through and we do a video inspection, and that tells us, you know, highlights the deficiencies within a sewer. Next item there is smoke and dye testing. That's our investigative group, that when we do identify a deficiency, or we try and identify areas where storm water is getting into the sanitary line. Our construction lateral and mainline sewer repair. That's our in-house construction crews that do any work whenever there is a break or an issue that takes place. House lateral cleaning. We have house crews. These are the people that basically are the ones that the public sees more often than not. When, if they do have an issue at their house, these are the responders that come so, to try and alleviate a problem such as it could be flooding in their basement. Next item there is our treatment plant, pump station operation and maintenance. That's a subunit. We maintain over 50 pump stations throughout the county, so just to highlight that group. And then, in the final right-hand corner there is our 24/7 call-out service. That's our emergency group. So, obviously, whenever we do have these, it seems like these 100-year rains that seem to be coming multiple times of the year now. This group is, when rains do come, it probably happens like on a Saturday night or something like that, this is the crew that would respond if there's an emergency call, that come and try and assist in the problem. The next page there, page 3, is just a brief illustration of the sewer system itself. And some people get mistaken by what the county sanitary services, sewer services provide, and the difference between the regional sewer district. Regional sewer district is primarily, they're the treatment of the facility. So, after the sewage leaves the community, it goes into these large treatment, or large trunk lines, and that ultimately is conveyed to the treatment plant, usually southerly treatment plant off 77 there. But, this illustration shows the various sewer lines that are in your, comes off a typical house, from the sanitary to the storm line, and then how there's two separate, typically, two separate sewer lines that are located out in the street. In some of the older communities, these sewers are combined. But, in the city, I'm fairly certain that there isn't any combined sewers here within the city of Brooklyn. That next page there is that emergency assistance, as I made reference to on page 4. That's the 24-hour, seven-day-a-week service for eliminating block laterals and sewer mains. This is when we're, you're definitely having a problem, it needs to be addressed now, it can't wait till Monday morning when the regular crews come out. This is where we're able to respond. We have a dispatching service, and we have a supervisor on call at all times. Triage is a situation, if somebody does, if, like an acid in somebody's basement, such as a furnace, or a washing machine in the basement, the water's rising, and they need to, like, address a problem immediately. This is the group that responds. So, that is a 1-800 number that comes right to our office, it gets to our people, so that we're able to respond immediately to it. And that, we've had a number of calls, and I think Brian Hitch, my colleague, I have a few of my colleagues here, and I'm sorry I didn't introduce them at first. Brian Hitch, the guy in the tan suit there, he's in charge of our maintenance crews, oversees that group. Hugh Bloxidge, right next to him there is our engineer. He oversees a group of seven engineers that oversee, in turn, work with your city engineer, Doug Courtney and John Verba, in regards to any of the issues going on in the community. And then, Mike Chambers is our fiscal officer. He's the guy that keeps track of the finances that are brought in from your community accounts. That full-service program, so the next page there is a reference to the full-service program. These are the number of parcels that are in the community. There's over 4,000 parcels. Bless you. The average front footage on them is around almost 70 feet, and totally, community frontage on sewers is 274 feet. Based on that front footage is how we collect the dollars that are on the tax duplicate. And those dollars, and Mike will come up here and explain it a little bit deeper. So, that's broken up into six, there's a total of $2.60 of front footage. Sanitary sees 60 cents of that. The storm account currently sees $2 of that. And there's also a water program, but we're not putting any money into that at this time. We make adjustments to that, those accounts, on a yearly basis, as we're in communication with the city and the service director, just to figure out where is the more appropriate place to have monies available, depending on what the outlook is for the coming year. If we want to work on sanitary, or storm is the primary initiative, I guess, for the year. The next page there is 2016. That's our maintenance summary of activities that we did last year. House calls, there's over, there was over 290 house calls that took place. Construction visits, that's where there's a break, or something in the main line or the lateral line. There was over 130 calls in relation to that. Jetting service, we did over 51,000 feet of jetting. And mainline television inspection was at just over 21,000, or just under 22,000. So, the next page, I'm going to ask Mike to come up, give you an overview of the revenue, of where the dollars are coming, and where they're going out into the community. Mike?
Once again, I'm Mike Chambers. I'm the fiscal officer for Public Works. As Mike indicated on page 5, we collect a total of $2.60, you know, per front footage of each individual. That rate has not changed, and I, my summary right here goes back to 2007. That's been the same number since 2007. And I'm pretty sure if I went back further in history, it probably hasn't, you know, changed in well over 10 years. In 2015, we realized, as with a lot of our communities, we're beginning to get into more storm-related issues. We feel like we've gotten a good handle a lot of times on the sanitary, but a lot of times, the storm, if that's not cleaned, it can then push problems back down into our nice clean sanitaries and cause overflow. So, in 2000, at the end of 2015, and starting 2016, is when we reallocated, because at one time, the full 260 was all going to the sanitary account. And then, starting in 2016, we did what we know as a reallocation, as noted on page 5, which was 60 cents to the sanitary and $2 into the storm, because once again, we're going to start building up a pot of money to start addressing the storm needs within the community. So, as Mike indicated on page 7, this is, this information comes from the county fiscal office, and basically, the expected revenue versus the actual revenue. And once again, you can see the total expected revenue is 714,000, and the actual revenue received is about 699,000. This is very healthy. Some of our communities, unfortunately, like East Cleveland, we're lucky to get less than 50% of what we really expect versus actual. Very important for doing any kind of projections, and once again, so that's very healthy. I mean, no community is without any delinquencies at all, so this is a, this is a good sign. On page 8, this is the expenses for 2016, and we're going a little bit more detail on some of it, but the maintenance and sewage systems was 390,000. Our engineering inspection team was 75,000. Our capital expenditures, which, you know, was a very big hit this year, was 969,000. And we do have one loan, which is $3,773, for our total expenditure in 2016 of $1,438. On page 9, if you take a look at it, that kind of breaks down what the 969 was for. Obviously, the big hit was 812,000 to the Ridge Road project. You can see the other random projects that we also took care of in 2016, you know, for the grand total of $969,000. If we go to page 10, you know, we have one loan. A lot of times, when the loans, the county takes out the loans, it's on the county's books, it's not on the community's book, which is good. In this case, it's a small loan, it's a $51,000 loan, and we usually get a pretty decent interest rate, because not a lot of places are going to loan money for sewers. I think you guys, or you guys know that as well. Pretty much, it's OWDA is the only place that we can go to get these type of loans. We packaged this particular project together, and we did a bigger repair to a lot of our different communities. We had one big project back in 2012, and your share of that was $51,000. So, we leveraged the size of the project to get a better price. And then, the annual payment is a small $3,773. On page 11 is where we started 2016 and where we ended 2016. You can see, once again, the sanitary beginning balance was $1,400,000. There was no storm balance, because as I indicated, we just started reallocating the monies into the storm account, for beginning balance of 1.4 million. You can see the revenue that we, I went through the earlier slide, the actual revenue received was 710,000. You see now, what the $2 brings in is 524,000 for the storm pot. The expenses, unfortunately, once again, I will say this, the community was in a very good position, and we're going to get it back, you know, in a good condition. As I said, for 10 years, even at that same rate, a very, you know, good rate, it brought up enough money, which allowed us now to address it and switch it over to the storm component that started hitting at those sewers. Unfortunately, you had that, that Ridge Road project came, and you were able to finance that 100% yourself. Otherwise, we've been forced to take out another loan, and, and once again, you're one of the few communities that actually had the ability to take care of that debt. And as we go to further slides here, I'll show you how we're going to, you know, be back in good shape here in a couple of years. But, the ending balance was $694,000. If we go to page 12, you're going to see our projection. Once again, we'll start with our 694. We're continuing with our allocation into the storm. We're going to, you know, hopefully, respond to our calls, our emergency calls. We're cutting back a little bit on our mainline cleaning and our television as well. We felt, you know, we have a program, we're trying to do it every five years, that's our goal, three years for the jetting, five years for TV, and we feel that you're in good shape, so we're cutting back a little bit on that program. We're still responding to all the calls and emergency breaks and everything like that. And once again, you know, we're going to project a slight deficit, because I have to change, the only time I can reallocate is every September, in the first, first week in September, I have to have those rates certified for the collection in January. So, I couldn't do anything mid-year of '16. Now, for 2017, we are going to go ahead and reallocate, and we'll get into that for 2018 on the next page, but the ending balance projected to be is 849,000. Once again, a very healthy balance in storm, a small deficit in the sanitary, nothing that we're concerned about. If we look at the 2018 projection, once again, we're going to reallocate some money back into the sanitary component, and by the end of 2018, we'll have sanitary, once again, positive, we'll have a very nice balance in the storm, for a total balance of 1.1 million. I know I kind of hit that pretty quickly, but I'll answer any questions you have at the end. The next slide on page 14 is, you know, you know, where do we stand up with everybody else? I picked the, you know, Parma Heights, which is next door, they're at 250. Once again, you guys are 260. Our average community, just so you know, is right around 275 to 280. Once again, we, Gates Mills is very high. They chose to fund a lot of their capital infrastructure through this process. They didn't have money to pay out of their general fund, and, you know, we obviously worked with the city, we just didn't raise it to $10. It was, you know, based on their asking us to do that. But, overall, you're still below our average, and you're slightly above, you know, Parma Heights. If I get into page 15, I'll turn it over to the engineer, to talk a little bit about the engineering priorities, and then, at the end, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to address them.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening, Council. The 2017 priorities. One is the illicit discharge mitigation program. Been working with the city on that for a while. Right now, Orchard Avenue and Rodone are two of the areas concerned. These are based on Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Water quality people go out and test storm outfalls into the streams, and they'll find that there's sanitary sewage. They will isolate those sections up to one or two runs of sanitary and storm sewer within the city. And then, working with the city, we do dye testing of the homes, and a test to see which homes are tied correctly or incorrectly into the system. And we try to narrow it down, so we can only, you know, only have to fix one or two houses that, for whatever reason, the sanitary sewage is going into the storm sewers. And we're working on that, and we're getting this narrowed down. There's like five homes that need to be tested on Orchard here in the near future, and a couple more on Rodone, to hopefully get this all hammered out. We have a couple of repairs and rehab that either been done, or we're thinking of doing. Some recent TV work on a sewer that comes out of the north and wraps around through the Metro Park, and comes out just this side of Tiedemann near Kitty Park. The sewer going under Memphis is in not great shape. We're looking at probably lining that here in the next six months. And then, there was a recent manhole repair on South Lane Drive. We'll, we'll work with, with John, with the city engineer, on exactly, you know, when we get this lined, and things like that. We also review new connections to the system. There have been three this year, Ryder Truck, a local business, AD 215 Clinton, and then the Lightcomb Childcare Facility, new connection to the sewers. Kind of, it's called, the unknown in the future is the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District's various sewer system evaluation surveys that are ongoing. The city of Brooklyn is included in the Mill Creek and other city combined sewer area cities, SSES. Personally, I don't know why they didn't include it with the Southwest, which is going to come up in a year, but they put it with the Mill Creek. It's part of the 2018 work plan, so come 2018, there will be meetings with the city by sewer district and their personnel. They'll let you know where they're going to put flow monitors in, where they might start doing dye testing, smoke testing, looking for infiltration. Sewer districts looking at reducing the amount of wet weather flow that gets into their separate sanitary system. So, they'll be out here later this year talking to you about that. So, that's...
Just real briefly, since that one significant expense back in last year, I think it's probably best to recap that, and what that expense was, and how it all tied into.
Right. Just an overview of the, the big expense was the repairs to the Ridge Road sewer. Went back into my emails today, and it was two years ago this week, that got a call from the Northeast Ohio Sewer District one afternoon, and said, "Our regulator's jammed full of your sewer." So, this, up there at Meadowbrook and Ridge Road, their sewer district has a regulator that regulates the flow going to the Big Creek Interceptor, rest overflows to Big Creek. That tile sewer has started to fail between Delbank and Meadowbrook, and the sewer is in such bad shape that we had to replace that entire 300-foot section. Replacing a sewer in place on a busy road with a water line built on top of it, unfortunately, turned out to be an expensive project. It was a little over $600,000 to get that done. Probably four months after we were done, got another call, there was a sinkhole between Delbank and Brookside, and same sewer, same sewer, tile sewer, was falling apart again. So, we responded, got it stabilized, and at that point, that's when there was some discussions that were initiated between the city and the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Essentially convinced the sewer district that this was an inter-community sewer, this was not just a Brooklyn sewer, and that this needed to be a sewer district problem and responsibility. At that point, through a little bit of negotiation, we had the sewer stabilized, so there was no, say, immediate problem. The sewer district did take over that sewer. They did replace the entire open cut section, which is about five blocks worth of sewer before it becomes sewer and tunnel. And then, that sewer runs all the way down to about West 67th Street, I believe is the street name. It's kind of the low spot north of Bit Off. In Ridge Road, there's, I think, a school and a library on the one side. That's where, that's where the sewer sort of turns towards, it starts heading towards Cleveland at that point. So, it runs up the Bit Off, and then it becomes a Cleveland sewer. I have a couple of handouts, just, if you need them, just to, what part is the sewer district sewer now, and where we did the repairs. I'll just hand these around, just for everybody up here to have them, and that's such what, that's where, those were the big expenses. We started in 2015, it hit the 2016 budget, just, just the way things work, billing and stuff like that.
Okay, this next slide is page 16. It's the 2017 maintenance priorities, and Brian and his team, just to lay them out for you.
Yes, good evening. Mr. Dever already went through at the beginning of the presentation about the 2016 maintenance counts that we went through, and what we did in the city in 2016. The 2017 maintenance priorities, we really haven't set up a real good projection, you know, what streets we're going to do, and a goal for how many streets we're going to televise and clean this year, only because of the restrictions on the budget with the Ridge Road sewer. Now, what we're hoping to do by the end of the year is to sit down and get a good projection going. What we do in these communities is we try to set up, for the first three years, we're going to clean a third of the city, and we're going to do it systematically, so that we clean it the right way, so that we clean it, so that everything runs down to the main lines, and we're going to make sure we hit every little, every little side street, everything. So, that's, that's how we like to do it. And in doing so, with the money in both the accounts, with these, the sanitary and the storm accounts, which should be plentiful by next year, we should be able to do a little more footage. Like, right now, so far this year, we've jetted about 44,000 feet of sewer in the city, which is a good number, but, you know, we could probably increase that next year, and get the storm and the sanitary clean at the same time, thus working better. That way, we reduce the amount of basins that are flooded. This year, so far, we've had 138 visits as far as our crews coming out for emergency services to the residents. So, that's still a pretty high number, but, you know, we could reduce that throughout the years with some maintenance on the main lines. That's always our goal. So, the projections will come hopefully by the end of the year. I'll have them laid out. We work with the city, you know, with their approval, and we'll check on the budgets and see, all right, this is the amount of footage we'd like to do for 2018, start this system going. We do map everything we do, so everything we've already done for 2017 has already been mapped, and so we have record of what we've done. So, we won't repeat any work, so the work will just keep on going in a three-to-five-year cycle, depending on how we're working with the budget and everything else. So, that's how we kind of work our projections, as far as trying to get the most maintenance for our buck. And hopefully, with that, with the good mains power, hopefully, the 24-hour emergency services going on, the main lines won't clog up as bad, and the home visits will be a lot lower, we hope. So, this page 16 shows everything that my department does. We do sanitary work, we do storm work, we do catch basin cleaning, we do catch basin rehabbing, we rebuild a whole catch basin, the 24-hour service that we've talked about so greatly, we're pretty proud of, because we do have a great response time. I'm sure if you talk to their communities, they'll even tell you, we're pretty good about getting out there right away to help the residents. And then, also, our lateral services department also does. We have our own house dye testing and flow monitoring also, for engineering purposes. So, that's a great reduction if we're using our service instead of going out to an engineering firm for such services as that. If there's any questions, I mean, we can answer now or at the end of the presentation about any of the services. Yes?
Good question. Would you please give the number, just so the public can hear, of the 24-hour emergency service number?
Oh, sure.
In case people...
Yeah, it's a 24-hour number. It's 216-443-8201. And after 5 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the evening, it rolls over right to our 24-hour answering service, and then they get ahold of a supervisor who will call the resident back.
And what instance should a resident call for that?
Anytime they feel that their appliances, their furnace in the base, our water tank, the water's encroaching the basement, or they can't use their facilities.
Okay.
Then, for sure, we'll...
Thank you.
We usually have a supervisor call back and triage and say, "What's, what's going on? We want to make sure that it's warranted, that we're sending a crew out."
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thanks. So, I'm going to try, switch gears here for a second, and just talk briefly about our road and bridge project information. When you go to page 17, we've had a program in place for the last few years here, which the community has participated in, and that's our material reimbursement program. That's where the county pays 100% for the materials... That's where the county pays 100% for the materials and the city provides the labor to do any type of preventative improvements, preventative maintenance to the county roads. So those roads that are designated. So just this past year, the city was awarded 17, well, this year alone, was awarded $17,000 in maintenance funds and then John and his crews are going to ultimately be the ones to do the work there and then we'll reimburse the community, usually in October, November. Recent past projects, the Ridge Road project was in 2013. It was a county-run project. Obviously, that was a significant project, that complete replacement. Memphis Avenue in 2016, it was a municipal-run project, but the county contributed over $500,000 to that project. Tiedemann Road, the I-480 approaches, the county contributed over $220,000 to that project. The two future projects that are forthcoming now is the Memphis Road Bridge, it's scheduled for 2020, that's a county, county bridge right there across from the Kitty Park. We just awarded a design contract for that, so it's getting underway for design. These type of projects, it's typically a three to five-year process to get it from designed to sold to under construction. And then the Ridge Road from Memphis to Denison, that's scheduled in 2021 and those have no aca dollars contributing to it and the county is going to contribute into it also. So that's a brief overview of the county, the Public Works Department. And open any questions or any comments?
Chief, may I be right here? Thank you. I just have a quick question for the engineer and that is, will you be on track to finish the illicit discharge mitigation? We're hoping to be able to do some roadwork on Orchard and Torrance next year, but obviously it's contingent on that project being completed.
Yes, our goal is to get that, get those all identified this year and get those fixed and be done with it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on council having comments or questions?
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your thorough explanation. Very interesting.
Thank you very much. And feel free, if we need to come back in the near future, I'm sure we'll be here for you, okay?
Very good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, our second presentation for this evening is from the National American Heart Association and with that, I'm going to turn over to Chief Zemec.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Entertained a thought of coming down too. This is Alexander Kuhn. He's here to present the recognition to the city of Brooklyn and the city of Brooklyn Fire Department. This recognition, well, I'll let you tell about what it does and everything.
It's about plumbing.
Yeah, yeah. And anyway, it's about keeping it flowing, right? Go ahead, Alexander.
Sure. And it's great to be here this evening in Brooklyn. Talk about plumbing, really. Plumbing in your heart, specifically about heart attacks and most serious type of heart attack called a STEMI heart attack. So from the American Heart Association, we recognize the critical life-saving role EMS provides to the overall success of STEMI outcome and care. The correct tools are training allowing EMS providers to rapidly identify STEMI, properly notify the destination center and activate an early response by each hospital personnel. As an EMS agency that delivers education, STEMI identification, provides access to 12 lead ECG machines and develops protocols derived from the American College of Cardiology and American Heart Association guideline recommendations, your pre-hospital care professionals are driving improvements in care and outcome for STEMI patients in your, your community. Beyond these components of a high-functioning STEMI system and care, Brooklyn Fire Department is part of an elite group of pre-hospital care agencies in the United States, not just focused on high-functioning, but also high-quality STEMI systems of care. Brooklyn Fire Department joins 627 other EMS agencies in the U.S. and is one of 60 agencies in the state of Ohio, receiving the 2017 American Heart Association Mission Lifeline Performance Achievement Award. To achieve the Silver Plus Performance Achievement Award, Brooklyn Fire Department achieved a 75% or higher quality score on each of the specific EMS quality measures for 12 months. These measures include percentage of patients with non-traumatic chest pain over the age of 35 that are treated and transported by EMS who received a 12 lead ECG and the percentage of STEMI patients treated and transported to a STEMI receiving with a pre-hospital first medical contact device in less than 90 minutes. So if somebody had a heart attack here, the time that your fire department arrived, to the time they got to the cath lab and that artery was open is less than 90 minutes. And then the final measure is the percentage of 12 lead ETGs that are completed within 10 minutes. Today, we're celebrating lives saved because of the hard work and dedication of Brooklyn Fire Department. The community served by Brooklyn Fire Department should be very proud of the pre-hospital care professionals. For their accomplishment, the American Heart Association will recognize throughout the year in professional meetings and professional journals, including EMS World Magazine and on the AHA website, Brooklyn Fire Department. So on behalf of all staff and volunteers in the American Heart Association, I would like to present Brooklyn Fire Department with the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline 2017 EMS Silver Performance Achievement Award. Congratulations on your contribution.
Just to, you know, you know, put this in perspective too, Parma, UH Parma has one of the highest rates of door-to-cat time and door-to-opening artery time. Like Alex talked about, 90 minutes is the national standard. You have to meet that. From the time we arrive on the scene till the time we get the patient in a hospital and the patient gets to the cath lab and the artery is either balloon open or stent replaced, the average has to be in that 90-minute, you know, 90-minute time period. Parma is 23 minutes and Brooklyn, Brooklyn has rated as low as 34 minutes from the time we've gotten to the patient to the time we got him to the cath labs. So I applaud University Hospitals and Parma as a heart center and a cardiac care center too for being all part of this team of taking care of cardiac patients. Congratulations again, thank you for coming on.
Absolutely, thank you for having me.
Mayor, can I stand? All right, the mayor wanted me to bring up a couple other things while I'm up here so if you'll entertain. Back on, back in May, I had to go to Perkins Fire two weeks ago. So I was going to bring this up, but didn't get a chance to. So back in May, we had four gentlemen who responded June 25th to an industry here in the city where a patient was crushed by a 700-pound piece of equipment. Upon arrival, the crew found a patient kneeling on the floor, suffering from severe multiple traumatic injuries. He had his air almost torn off. He had injuries to his neck, his face, his head, and his whole left side of his body. They freed him from the machinery, they stabilized him, they transported him to, to the trauma center and en route his chest. It's called tension pneumothorax where his lung deflated and all the other air was leaking in his chest, pushing on the injured lung, pushing it across the heart, squeezing down on the heart so the heart couldn't fill. So that's a tension pneumothorax. You have to recognize it early and the only way to relieve it in the field is to put a 14-gauge, big old needle, you know, on a patient's chest in a certain area to get that pressure out, which they did en route to the trauma center. So for that recognition, quick action, working together like they did, they won what's called the Star Life Award, which is presented by the Ohio Division of EMS every year and by the American College of Emergency Physicians down in Columbus. So these four gentlemen, one, the mayor, drew up some nice certificates for them and they're in their files and I presented them the other day with them. Firefighter Edward Cryowski, firefighter medic Ed Coin, firefighter medic Brian Sees and Lieutenant James Mulchan were the four on the, on the call. So I want council to know that and I want the public to know that. Now, my last thing I want to talk about is Pulse Point. We have been blessed, University Hospitals has paid for Pulse Point for the four communities that belong to the Parma Regional Dispatch. So there's Brooklyn, Parma, Parma Heights and Brook Park. And what this does across the nation, it's being used, if you're trained in CPR or you know some type of CPR and you download the app into your Android device, your smartphone, your iPad, and if you're near where a person has suffered a cardiac arrest, you will be notified and you will be mapped to wherever this patient is if you want to start early CPR force. It will also map you to the closest automatic external defibrillator. So right now, you guys can download because it's active. For Brooklyn, you can pick whatever department too when you go to your app page. It's a free app, Pulse Point is called. And then once you get the app, you could pick which department. So if you want to pick Parma Heights and Parma and Brook Park as well as Brooklyn, when you're in those communities with your phone, it will also notify you in those communities of the same thing. Our hope is that we save more lives. Early CPR is the key and then early defibrillation is the key. So there's big press relief this Thursday for the four communities at the Parma Fire Department Station One at 10:30 in the morning. But since it's active, we're doing a soft opening right now and just letting everybody know, you know, letting the community know too. So that's it. I appreciate you allowing me to stand up here and talk and does if anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks for sending that out. I had a chance to look over the, some of the videos and it's amazing.
It is amazing. I mean, you know...
Thanks for following up on that. Thank you to UH for sponsoring that.
You can also download party app too where you hear the radio traffic. You know, so you could be on the scene with your phone, doing CPR and your phone will also walk you through, you know, the citizen of how to give CPR. You could push, show me how again, you know, and then you could actually hear our radio traffic in the background so you know how close we are to you.
It's really good. Thank you, Chief.
Very cool.
And I was just going to comment that it was on Channel 8. They did a pretty extensive, so if anybody wants to look on the Channel 8 app too, they did a pretty extensive news thing describing it and yeah, it is an amazing, wonderful...
I know Channel 3 did too. Monica Robbins did one tonight, Channel 3. Same thing, I think all the stations are jumping out.
Yeah, probably. Well, it's a good thing.
Sure. Yeah, it's a good thing to report on.
Thank you very much again, Chief. I appreciate that. Congratulations to the Fire Department on that award. We'll now proceed with our council meeting. Just as a reminder, this is our final regularly scheduled meeting for the summer recess. Council will be recessed for July and August. We do expect to have some special meetings and of course, those will be noticed as they come up. All right, as for the agenda this evening, under Old Business, we have Resolution 2017-8, which is up for third reading and adoption, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2018. Ordinance 2017-50 is on second reading, approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a community reinvestment area tax agreement with Brooklyn Point LLC at the estimated cost of $12 million. Ordinance 2017-53 is on second reading, authorizing a community cautionary agreement with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for the Big Creek Watershed Nine Element Plan Project. And ordinance 2017-55 is on second reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a ground lease with the Caihoga Urban Renewable Solar One LLC for the development, design, installation and operation of a solar-powered electric generation facility on the portion of land located at 9400 Memphis Avenue. We do have three items under New Business this evening, the first of which is ordinance 2017-57. This is to approve the 2017 replacement pages of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinances. Ordinance 2017-58, authorizing a contract between Brenda Janis and the city of Brooklyn to provide services as a cook for the senior center luncheon program. And lastly is ordinance 2017-59, providing for the submission to the electric of amendments to the city charter. At this time, we'll have a public session. If any one of the audience has anything to say for the good and well for the city of Brooklyn, please state forward and state your name and address and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Just a couple of things. Issue three, are there any new things or trying to do something in November to help pass this? Is there any news on Menards regarding them building in Brooklyn? I heard there was something through a friend about taxes, that the state was already taxing them for a building. Is Brooklyn trying to help them out with this to get the building going? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we will now move on with reports of committees, commissions and boards. And we begin this evening with a planning commission, Councilman DeMarco.
There will be a planning commission meeting on Thursday, July 6, 2017 at 6:00 p.m. in Brooklyn City Hall Conference Room. We hear a request from Shamira Crawford for conditional use for daycare in RRDHP Retail Business District at 4674 Ridge Road, burner parcel number 43307004. Any residents welcome to attend the meeting and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next up is economic development. Councilwoman Bucci.
Thank you. I had previously reported that the Economic Development Committee had authorized a letter offering a CRA to a confidential potential employer and I just wanted to give everybody an update on that. This is the company being identified as Project Century. They are delaying the CRA process because they're not ready to be identified publicly, which would have to occur if we had legislation relating to a CRA. If Brooklyn is selected, they will pursue the CRA after they make a final decision and announcement. So hopefully this will come to fruition. Also, we do need dates for a meeting when everyone is available for the final presentation on the GICE project. They did submit the report and Mr. Udris has requested that it be organized in a little bit different order. This will be on top of other dates that we have to meet. What we're going to do is we're going to have a joint Community Improvement Corporation and Economic Development Committee meeting to hear this presentation and we'd like to include, of course, all of council and the steering committee and this is a public meeting so the public is welcome. So I just want to make sure that that also is on everybody's radar, that we need to schedule that. And that completes my report. Thank you.
May I have your notice?
Yes.
Is that report available to council or is it in the process of being reorganized or, because I'd like to get a copy prior to trying to set up...
I believe everybody should have a copy prior to it. I believe they just finished. Mayor, do you know? I think Mr. Udris said he just got it back.
It's considered a work product until the final papers are documented and as soon as it's finalized, it'll be sent to all of you.
Do we know when that's going to be?
I believe it was this early this week, so I'll know more tomorrow when Mr. Udris is involved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bucci. Next up is the finance committee. We did meet this evening at 6:30 to go over several items. The first of which was Resolution 2017-8. This is the adopting the tax budget for fiscal year 2018 and this is budgets required by the Ohio Revised Code. Just a couple of highlights. The city collects 5.9 mils. 1.1 mils are used in the general fund, 1.75 for the fireman's pension, 1.63 for the police pension, one for debt retirement and 0.42 for street lighting. And the total budgeted property taxes for 2018 are just a shade over 1.75 million. And the finance committee did approve this for adoption this evening. Ordinance on 2017-50 is on second reading and this is authorizing the mayor to execute a community reinvestment agreement with Brooklyn Point LLC. And this is the building project for the senior living community that's going to be offering assisted living and memory care services. The facility will be approximately 68,000 square feet, would consist of 58 assisted living apartments and 22 memory care apartments in common areas. And the location is 4800 Idlewood Drive, which is the area most commonly referred to as right behind Ridge Park Square where we've been talking about for years. But this agreement would provide, provide a property tax exemption for 10 years at 50%. The estimated payroll when all of the full-time and part-time people are hired will be approximately 1.45 million and the total estimated investment of this project will be about 12 million. So this is the project, again, that's been talked about long before I was on council and it's stalled several times, been to a foreclosure, but now it's new, it's a new ownership and so hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to get this finalized and hopefully see that project come to fruition here in the next year or so. Next up is ordinance 2017-53 is on second reading and this is authorizing a cautionary agreement with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for the Big Creek Watershed Nine Element Plan Project. And what this ordinance does... And what this ordinance does, it approves the sewer district's $2,000 contribution using cost-sharing money to the Big Creek Connect Storm Water Management Project for our portion of the Big Creek Watershed. Then we discussed ordinance 2017-55, and this is authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease with Caihoga Urban Renewable Solar. And this is for the development, installation, and operation of the solar-powered electric facility down at the old dump that's now being kept. And this ordinance permits the mayor to enter into that lease agreement. And this will operate the solar panels between 40 and 60 acres there on the landfill site. And the administration's still in negotiation for the terms of that lease, but those should be finalized here according to Mr. Butler in our finance meeting in the next week or so. So, that will be on second reading this evening, and hopefully, we'll have a special meeting in the next week or so to finalize that and continue the ball rolling on that project, which is a great project there for the old city dump. Then lastly, we discussed ordinance 2017-58, and we do hope to pass this by emergency this evening. This is authorizing a contract between Brenda Janis and the City of Brooklyn to provide services as a cook for the Senior Center Luncheon Program. Brenda would be an independent contractor, and she would prepare and serve meals, maintain the kitchen facilities at times designated by the senior services coordinator at the Senior Center. And she will work no more than 24 hours at a rate not to exceed $11 per hour. And that is all I have for the Finance Committee. We'll now move on with reports of council and begin this evening with Mr. Musco.
Good evening. Just a couple of items. I wanted to comment that I had mentioned about festivals coming up at local churches, and I just wanted to say that the Trinity Church had their Strawberry Festival, and it went very well. And yesterday, I spent most of the day working at St. Thomas More. We had our St. Thomas More Festival. That was very well attended, and hopefully, we made a good amount of money for the church. It was kind of funny because we award a $10,000 prize, and one of the nuns won the $10,000. So, that was kind of fun. I also wanted to compliment... They also did the community garage sale this weekend, and it seems like that was very well received. I know I live over on Torrance. The streets, the Torrance Orchard, Ansonia, I saw people parked on both sides of the street. There were a lot of people coming, a lot of people in the community, and a lot of houses participated. So, that was a great thing. I hope that we continue it. I wanted to give special kudos to Dawn Neal, who was nice enough and patient enough to type up everything for every home what they were highlighting. And then, that was featured on the Brooklyn website. So, that was very helpful because I know people specifically came to certain homes looking for what they were actually offering. And I also ran into Sergeant Knapp. He was out on bicycle patrol, and he commented that he thought that the garage sale went quite well, and everybody was very well behaved, and it was just a general success for the city. Just would like to remind people that if you did put a sign up saying you're having a yard sale, please take it down. Don't leave them up all over the place in the city. I made a comment also in a prior meeting that as summer is coming, everybody's going to be outside more. Fourth of July starts the fireworks shooting off. Once again, I just ask that people show some respect for their neighbors. Everybody's allowed to celebrate. Everybody's allowed to go out and have a picnic and enjoy their yard. But please show respect for your neighbors in terms of fireworks and noise and things like that. And of course, fireworks are illegal. We're not supposed to be shooting them off, just to make that point before the chief jumps in and corrects me. But please show respect for your neighbors. I just ask that again. Couple of other items. There is a... Unfortunately, and I hate seeing Brooklyn in the news for nutty things, but now, apparently, we have a person riding around on a bike with a bow and arrow, shooting cats. And my girlfriend actually lost her cat. And I would just appeal to people that if anybody knows who this person is, we've got to get that person not only off the street, but into serious help. They are a frightening menace. Somebody that would go around, shoot a poor cat on a bicycle, and then wait and go back and pick up the cat's body. It's a sick, disgusting person doing something like that. And that's the last way I want to see Brooklyn once again portrayed in the news. But clearly, it's not within our control. Just a few other things. I wanted to give a special Bravo also to the Fire Department and the EMS. We are very blessed in Brooklyn to have the EMS that we have. I've had it to my house for family members. My neighbors have had them out. They're not only competent, but they are extremely polite and very professional. So, thank you, thank you, that we have that EMS here in Brooklyn. Also, just wanted to make a very brief comment about we're finally going to get the senior living that we've been talking about for so long. And a lot of times, I have people ask me, "Well, you know, why did it take so long? Or why haven't they built something where Gold Circle is? Or why hasn't this done?" A lot of it is the people own the land. Brooklyn doesn't own the land. So, for example, with the adult... Excuse me, the nursing home facility, the gentleman that owned it kept having financial problems. First, he thought he got financing, then he didn't. Then he thought he had financing, then he didn't. So, we were working with him through the whole time, and finally, it got to the point where, thank God, he gave up and sold it to somebody that actually had the financial backing and the knowledge to proceed. But just so you know, it's not entirely within Brooklyn's control. So, many of these buildings are controlled and owned by, you know, other people and companies, and we can stay after them to get them refurbished and get them rented out. But it's not, you know, it's not our land, so we can't dictate to people what they're going to do. There are people here... I wanted to comment that we had members of the community volunteer. Councilpeople asked them if they would, and they served as a member of the Charter of a Charter Review Committee that worked very diligently under the direction of our law director, Mr. Butler, to go over the Brooklyn Charter and make recommendations and changes. We're still in the... Council just received those in the last day or so. They are going to be on the November ballot. The changes that they have recommended will be voted on by the citizens of Brooklyn. But I just wanted to particularly thank those people who gave their time and their intelligence and worked very hard on that Charter Review Committee. Two other very quick things. I appreciate the Chief Zemek giving the report as a director. And I just, I say this just about every other council meeting. The more that we can hear from the directors giving reports, the better. I constantly am asked by citizens, you know, "What's going on with service? Or what's going on with the police? Or what's going on with building?" And I know for the directors, it's probably just part of their everyday business. But the more that people can share information with the citizens and with the community, the better. This is a great forum for the directors to be there and to tell us what's going on in the city because people do watch these meetings, and they are interested. They're very interested in what's going on. And finally, I just wanted to comment that although this is the last meeting, official meeting before we have a summer recess, as councilpeople, we're available all summer, except when we go on holiday. So, again, give us a call, email us if you have issues. We're not going away. We're just not officially meeting. And frankly, we are going to be meeting over the summer. We have budget discussions that are still going on. Councilwoman Pucey commented on the GICE presentation. And council also has some work to do on our organizational rules, the way in which we run our meetings. And I know many of us are working very hard to try to make the meetings more meaningful and more informative to the public. So, we also want to have meetings on that to hopefully enhance that. And that's all I have. Everybody, again, have a very safe and happy summer, and happy Fourth of July. Enjoy your barbecues, and again, respect your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Poochie.
Thank you. First, I'd like to acknowledge the Charter Review Commission and welcome some of the members that are here with us this evening. Mrs. Sue Brodic, Mr. Ron Campbell, Mrs. Fran Barrett, Mr. Ron Bellbeer, who is the chair, Mr. Dick Kistemaker, who is the vice chair, Mr. Carl Etheridge, Mrs. Denise Folger, Mr. Tom Height, and Mr. Jerry Hayes. I just want to sincerely thank all of you for your time and attention. They took this role very seriously and were thoughtful in their discussions and deliberations. It was very apparent to me from the several meetings that I was able to attend that each of the members made decisions on what they felt was in the best interest of the city. And as Director Butler stated in an email to us that sometimes it can be a dull subject matter. I'd also like to thank Director Butler for his support and professionalism during this process, and also Ms. Ludwig, who acted as the secretary. I appreciate everybody's efforts. Chief Zemek already explained the details of the Pulse Point, and I just want residents to know that this was really a long time coming for our community. And I'd like to thank the chief for pursuing this. I first brought this to his attention in 2014, and I asked him to work to bring this to our community. And I had read that University Hospitals had brought this to Northeast Ohio, but it was only available to the East Side communities that were involved in their regional dispatch over there. So, I was hopeful because we had recently become affiliated with University Hospital through their acquisition of Parma Hospital that we would be able to bring this to Brooklyn. So, there were several hurdles. We first had to wait until the regional dispatch was up and running. Then, there were some issues with differences in the technology. And there was also the potential for a charge to the communities. So, as the chief mentioned, this is going to be in all the Parma Regional Dispatch communities, and UH will be paying for this. So, I do want to thank you for your effort. I thought residents might be interested to know actually how this originated. It was in 2009 after a San Ramon Valley Fire Chief, Richard Price, he watched as his own fire department arrived to a medical emergency at a store that was right next door to a deli where he was eating lunch. A man at the store had collapsed and needed CPR. Because this was a medical emergency, the chief was unaware that this was going on right next door. If it had been a fire, they would have called him. But they didn't call the chief for what they consider routine medical emergencies. So, had he known, he could have made a difference because he was CPR-trained, and he also had a defibrillator right in his car. So, he's the one that came up with this idea. And as of November 26 of 2016, there were over 1,300 separate fire and EMS agencies across the United States that are set up for Pulse Point. So, thank you, chief, for being so diligent in pursuing this. I do have one quick question, though. How are we going to identify the AEDs that are in Brooklyn but not in our public buildings?
What we're... UH is handling a lot of calling businesses in the communities to see if they have an AED. For our AEDs that we have, we're taking pictures of them right now. They'll be put by the UH IT guys on the Pulse Point program. So, immediately, when you're notified and you touch AED location, it'll show you. And it'll show you a little picture of the building and, you know, everything else. So, we're in a process of taking pictures of our inventory so we can put that in. And then, UH is handling other businesses in all those four communities to ask them, "Do you have an AED? And if you do, what's the address?"
So, they're going to actually contact every single business?
Yeah.
Okay. And just so you're... You're probably already aware of this, but the schools have...
Yes.
...an AED also.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'd like to congratulate our resident, Michael Harry. He's a very special young man. He won a silver medal at the Special Olympic Summer Games for bowling over the weekend. And I'd ask, when we get back in session, that we either do a proclamation or a resolution acknowledging this achievement. Congratulations also to Zach Lothar and his family. Zach does not live in Brooklyn, but he's on the Cleveland side of Brooklyn Acres. He did go to St. Thomas More, and his parents, Becky and Mark, and his grandparents are from Brooklyn. About a week and a half ago, Zach was drafted by the Baltimore Orioles in the second round of the Major League Baseball draft. And this could not have happened to a nicer young man or a nicer family. And we're all just so very proud and happy for all of them. As Ms. Musco mentioned, the citywide garage sale was a success. There was beautiful weather. I would like to just give a shout out to the resident who actually first brought this suggestion to the city a few years ago, and that's Mrs. Cheryl Palumbo. She had experienced it in another community and thought it would be such a great idea. So, I'm glad to see we were finally able to accomplish this. And also, special thanks to Dawn Neal, who coordinated this. It was a lot of hard work, and she's the secretary in the Building Department, and this is their very busy time of year. So, thank you. She did a great job. And I know Mary Jo also assisted with publicizing it on social media. So, thank you, Mary Jo, for what you did as well. I do have one suggestion, and I know that other residents have, you know, kind of weighed in with suggestions. But maybe next year, we could get some signs just at the main intersections, and they could be pretty generic, like "Citywide Garage Sale This Weekend", "Maps Available", and then give the city web address. Because I know we do our best to try and reach as many people as possible, but a lot of the time, it's just a matter of people driving by when you're having it. I attended the budget meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like to thank Director Schaefer for all the materials that she provided. We know that it's a big job to get all of that together for us, and it is very helpful. I want to repeat something that I'm not the only person who has said this, and I said this to Mr. Schaefer when we met, that we really need to go beyond looking at 2018 in a vacuum. We need to be looking a little bit further ahead. We just can't keep saying, "Okay, we're going to deficit spend, you know, so much in '17, so much in '18, so much in '19", because we just can't keep going through our reserves like that. I realize that the vast majority of our budget is made up by personnel costs for wages and benefits, and most of it is tied to collective bargaining. But we have got to look at this a little more globally. We just can't go through the reserves and, you know, all of a sudden, then the bottom falls out, and we've got to, you know, make very draconian cuts. We just really need to take a look at a little bit further out. Regarding the Animal Control Officer, I'm not sure, Mayor, if you're going to give us an update, or Chief Milky, but it was very disappointing that we had to learn about this from other people. I personally learned about this from a resident who saw it on social media. And, you know, all it takes is an email. I understand that she gave her notice, and she left, and we wish her well. But we on council should not be learning of these things second and third hand. I'd like to thank Mr. Dever, Mr. Chambers, and the other two gentlemen who didn't give their name. It was a very informative presentation, and I hope the residents found that information beneficial. The Chamber is sponsoring the Sixth Annual Picnic in the Park Saturday, August 19. Each year, I think word gets out a little more, and attendance is a little better. They are also looking for sponsors. And I have a brief report from... After our last council meeting on June 12, we had a special meeting to discuss the potential revisions to the rules of council. It was a very good discussion. We've got a few ideas on ways to improve things. So, I'll just go through the items we talked about quickly. Regarding minutes of council, we want to have a draft of the minutes provided to council as soon as practicable. Council members would then review and provide additions, Council members would then review and provide additions, deletions, corrections to our assistant clerk in a timely manner. These changes will be incorporated into the minutes, and then council will be provided with a red line and a clean copy to be included in the next council packet. On the signature page of the minutes, add date approved by council. And then in addition to the council meeting minutes, also go back to putting the council committee meeting minutes back up on the website for residents to read. Relating to the agenda, under Order of Business, for presentations, awards, and or commendations, we'd like to see the specific information relating to the recipients and what the occasion or award is to be included on the agenda. Under Resolutions and Ordinances, we want to reflect what our current practices of under old business resolutions and ordinances, and then new business resolution and ordinances. Regarding posting the agenda in council packets, in addition to posting the agenda on the city website, we would also like to post the packet, so that our residents are aware of the specifics of what's going on, and this is something that many communities do. On the agenda, all legislation listed will include the status that relates to the reading, and if emergency adoption is requested, this will also be reflected on the agenda. We discussed the previous order of business, which basically, for decades, included a reading of the agenda, and the fact that Councilman Tansky, at a previous organizational meeting, questioned why this was done, since all the legislation was read during the meeting, also frequently, it's read during a council committee report. He brought up the fact that it was redundant, and it was agreed to remove this from our order of business. So somehow, we're back to doing it again, and we have been back to doing it again for a while. So just wanted to get that situated and finalized, try to avoid some redundancy. And also regarding the section on standing committees, I'm sorry, to add the reference to the Economic Development and the Planning Commission and REC Board as it relates to And then we also all agreed that Mr. Van Kirk was not at that meeting, so we -- he had a previous proposal that he had made that we need to discuss, and that was adding prayer before council. So we do need to set up some meetings, and I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of what -- that we all know what we need to do. We need to schedule a meeting to continue the organizational for a final discussion on the rules of council. Then Mr. Butler, I don't think it'll take him too long to prepare an ordinance for what we're looking at. We need a special meeting then, if we're going to take a three readings for the first reading on the rules. We need a special meeting on the second reading, and also, we'll need a second reading on the charter review amendments. And for those meetings, we'll only need a quorum. Then up until the finance committee, we were looking at potentially meeting July 17. However, Mr. Butler informs us, we may have to look at moving that up. So if, you know, whatever the date is, we need to be prepared for three readings and adoption of the CRA for Brooklyn Point, the solar panel lease, the charter review amendments, and rules of council, and anything else that might come up. And that should wrap everything up. So if everybody could please contact Mary Jo tomorrow, and also, if you don't mind contacting Mr. Tansky, to see when he is available. And also keeping in mind that Mr. Udris is looking for when we're available for the G.I.S. Very briefly, congratulations to Chief Zemec and the Fire Department on the American Heart Association Awards, and also the Star Life Awards. Our Fire Department and Police Department is second to none as our service department. And I'd like to wish everyone a safe summer. Please watch out for pedestrians and cyclists, especially our children. Thank you very much. That completes my report.
Next up is Mrs. Delby.
Thank you. Pretty much has already been said. I'd like to wish everybody a happy and safe summer, and I do want to remind everyone about the kids. I leave about 7:00 in the morning for work, and there's a little boy that drives his little tricycle that early around my corner, and you have to be so cautious. I'm just a nervous wreck, so thank God for those rearview mirrors in the cars, and I'm always double checking and looking over my shoulder. I'd also like to thank Chief Milky and Chief Zemec for everything that they do in our city. I always feel so safe. The response time is amazing. I know a couple times, thank God, I haven't had to use the ambulance yet. I haven't had my heart attack yet. But when I do, chief, put that -- pedal to the metal. But I do thank you for all you do, and I know that the firemen and the police, and I've seen this, sometimes it's hard to do, because you deal with people that are sickly, or you may go into homes that aren't the nicest, and things happen. But I see how they treat them with dignity and respect, and that is so important to do, whether you're in service or whatever, is always to treat people with dignity and respect. Many times, it's hard to do, but I do know that they do that, and I'd like to thank them for that. There is a new scam out there, and the only reason I know that there's a new scam is I have younger children, and when they go out and they're with their friends. But the scam is, if you're at a, let's say, the kids are at a bar or something, and they meet up with somebody, and a person wants to put their phone number inside the other person's phone, don't let your kids do that. Tell them to be aware of doing that, because what's been happening is, when they've been putting the numbers in somebody else's phone, they've been accessing accounts. There's some way of doing it. I'm not sure how it's done, but please, I don't know, chief, if you've heard this, but please, this is a new thing. I've heard too. So please be aware of it, if you have kids, and, you know, it can be really detrimental. So that's one thing. Lastly, I hope everyone enjoys the parks, whether it's our park, whether it's Burea's Park, Coal Lake, whether it's in Lakewood, Parma Heights, or whether it's in Tremont. I'm originally from Tremont. So, and Edgewater. There's all kinds of things, and they're free going on in the city, all over. And Cleveland is just booming with all kinds of things to do. If you get a chance, go down to Edgewater and see that. That's free. You can enjoy that. Coming up in July is Taste of Tremont. That's a great thing to do. There's also arts in August in Tremont, and that's free, and it's just phenomenal. It's the ballet, it's the orchestra. So please come out, and I know other cities have movies going and all kinds of things going, so please enjoy the parks. If we didn't have our parks, it'd be pretty boring, and it's free. It's free entertainment. So that pretty much completes my report. I wish everyone a happy, safe summer, and God bless. Thank you.
Next up is Mrs. Politzki.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. It is true, everyone said just about everything, but I do have something a little bit different. It was my pleasure, along with another Laurel Garden Club member, to help the Girl Scout Troop Number 70648, comprised of only two young ladies, Kelsey Schlomer and Kylie Streeter, plant the Hope Garden in front of the Brooklyn Senior Center on the hottest day of the year, June 17. A front page article appeared in the Sun Post on June 22, 2017. Reporter Mark Holan has really promoted Brooklyn in the paper lately. I've heard many complaints, since the Sun Post has become multi-city, that Brooklyn has not been well represented. I'd like you to contact the Sun Post and let them know how much you appreciate Mark Holan and getting more Brooklyn in the news. Also, I would just quickly like to thank all those who volunteered to be on the Charter Review Commission. I was on the last one. It is a long, laborious, time-consuming job, but somebody has to do it. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. -- let's go next up is Mr. Marco.
I would just like to quickly offer my condolences to the Turek family on the passing of Bob Turek. To those who knew him, he was my neighbor for many years, growing up. He was a pretty good guy, and he will be missed. And I would also just like to thank all of the members of the Charter Review Committee. It was probably fairly boring at times, but I hope you learned something new about your city, and hopefully, you met some fellow residents that maybe you didn't know prior. And a special thanks to Mr. Hayes, who's here tonight. It was my appointee. I appreciate your time and effort. And to all the employees and their families, and all of our residents, I hope you have a safe and enjoyable summer.
Since I was unable to attend the last council meeting, I wanted to take a moment to publicly thank the Laurel Garden Club for donating and presenting the Gold Star and the Blue Star Memorials to the city of Brooklyn during Memorial Day. You know, honoring our military and their families is, I think we do so well, and the city is vital and well-deserved. And a really special moment for me, after the ceremony was over, I was able to meet Angel Lopez's parents, and who were here, obviously, for the unveiling of the Blue Star Memorial, or the Gold Star Memorial. Actually, she, I believe, mother unveiled it. And of course, they were crying, and, you know, of course, I was crying. And as I was giving her a hug, my son is just playing, who's three years old, a few feet away with his friends. And it really encapsulated what Memorial Day was all about for me. And being able to honor our military and our veterans in that way, and those that have given their lives. Ms. Politzki, you and the Laurel Garden Club, be commended. It was a tremendous presentation, and the monuments are beautiful. We didn't get a whole lot of chance that day to actually look at them, so I actually came back a day or two later with my son, and tried to explain to a three-year-old what it means that someone dies for their country. And although he doesn't fully understand that yet, I think it's important that we teach our kids those things. And I think he actually asked me later, "What does dying mean?" And, you know, as a three-year-old, it's a little hard to explain. But it's nice that we have that here in our community. And again, the Laurel Garden Club, be commended. And it's something that, if you haven't seen it yet, please go over there and take the time to do that. And we'll get to celebrate those men and women once again here in the next couple of days for our 241st birthday of the United States for the Fourth of July. Some walls are going up along I-480. As you have seen, they stopped there for a while, because they actually ran out of panels, but they are back in business again, and the panels on the north side are completed. I spoke into several residents on the north side, and the ones that I spoke into are absolutely thrilled that they're there. They've already cut down on the traffic noise tremendously in their backyards. And I want to thank now Mayor Gallagher, it was Councilwoman Gallagher, whenever this project started, she kind of initiated the petition drive to get those walls put up, and now they're working on the south side of 480. They should be finished by the end of October. So thanks to ODOT for their tremendous work, and they look very nice. I like the personal touch that they have on the walls with Knight Commons is on there, I think Bridge Park Square is on there, the city name's on there. So it's a really nice touch, and they look nice there in the city of Brooklyn. That was already mentioned, but I do want to commend our first responders for their efforts up at Perkins. I was actually up in Michigan at the time of that, and I got a text from my wife that said Perkins is on fire. And we actually have some family friends whose last name is Perkins, and I was like, "Their house is on fire." And she said, "The restaurant was on fire." And so there were actually people in the restaurant at the time, because it happened during business hours. To my knowledge, no one was hurt. And so I want to kudos once again to our firefighters, which dovetails into the award. They were given tonight the Mission Lifeline Silver Plus Award, and I won't keep saying it over and over again, as everyone already has, but we have some tremendous first responders here. And so my congratulations to you, chief, and the firefighters for that, and the great work that you do here in the city of Brooklyn. That is, I believe, Mrs. Pucci and some others mentioned, we did have another budget meeting last Tuesday. Mr. Schaefer and the administration continued laying out some groundwork for a budget discussions, and I felt the meeting was productive. And we're way ahead of the process that we've been, at least since I've been on council, as far as the budget for the next year. The next day, I did send out an email to all of council, just asking for further suggestions and ideas to be sent back to me, so I can kind of compile all those suggestions and ideas into one document, so we kind of have something to go with. I did present my ideas there, and my ideas did start at a zero deficit spend for 2018, and we can go back from there. So I would encourage members of council to take a look at that and offer those suggestions, just to get a dialogue going, so that we can continue this process moving forward into late 2017 into 2018. And I also want to thank the Charter Review Committee, the folks that serve on that committee. I know your pain, so to speak. I served on that last time around. I know it can be very arduous going through that, but I thank you for your recommendations. The wording is actually now being sent to the state and to the Board of Elections. After it's adopted, it'll be sent to them, and so the final wording will be sent, and then it'll be, after council adopts it, it'll be sent to the residents to vote on. So thank you so much for your time and your effort on that. And also, Mr. Ardito, we're not ignoring your questions. I believe that the mayor will answer those, and Mr. Verba may be about Menards as well. And that's all I have, so I will move on now to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I just want to echo the thank yous. I know my finance director wants to do a report tonight. He's got a family commitment, he has to leave by 8:30. So I'm going to skip all that and just say thank you for the few things everyone has already covered. Mr. Ardito, Menards, the only thing we can update you is, we are constant contact with them. They have every intention of building. They seem to swallow up a lot of land at one time, and they're on their own construction schedule. We did present them an offer from another buyer for a much higher rate than they paid. They have no interest in pursuing that, because they have every intention of building. It just about went. So we're hoping it's sooner than later, but we have no control over that. As far as issue three goes, as I recapped right after the election, you know, we, my administration heard the voters loud and clear, you know, they did not like issue three as it's proposed. We are still pursuing conversations at the university hospital, which are moving along very successfully with a concept which would have to go to the ballot. It's not going to be ready to go in November, but it will, when we have a final plan, we can talk about something that's mixed use with the recreation center and university hospitals, and a type of wellness center. I know the G.I.'s proposal does have a couple different scenarios in it. One is a scenario that some of you have already seen, and another is a very much downscaled version of what issue three had looked like. I think the only way to move forward from here is to do something in a piecemeal manner, where residents feel comfortable with each step of the process, and I think that's the only way it's going to work out successfully. So hopefully, you know, that's something that council, the CIC, and Economic Development Committee feel like when we look at this presentation from G.I.'s moving forward. As far as the ACO, ACO is a part-time job. I did know that this was put in the staff notes. I don't know how this wasn't communicated. It was communicated immediately after in the staff notes. I don't, I don't understand at what point is my obligation as an administrator to notify about part-time jobs. I literally have personal action forms on my desk, multiple ones weekly, about staff in and out, resignations, people leaving, people switching jobs within the city. So that line of, you know, what council expects and what I give, this is what the staff notes are supposed to establish weekly. I sit down with my directors every Tuesday. They give all the updates from their department. In this case, Chief Milky gave his update that the ACO put in her resignation. We worked out an internal protocol to deal with issues while she was leaving in a short two-week period afterwards. And there's certain protocol that me, as an administrator, have to go through, including going through the Civil Service Commission team to fill the job. So, you know, I don't really know what to say to that. A simple phone call can work, if you run the staff notes, if you had more questions about the position. You know, my phone call, my doors open, my telephone works, so please give me a call. And that is it. Thank you.
Excuse me. May I be recognized?
Yes.
We received that after it was already in social media. We received the staff notes.
I don't know what to tell you. I cannot control what goes onto social media immediately. I cannot control that.
No, I'm just saying it was after the fact, and I understand that we have many part-time employees. We don't need to know the minutia of all that, but this is something that, you know, it's a service that we provide our residents. The shelter closed because of this, so I just, something like that. I think it was worth an email, just letting us know. And also, while we're on the subject, when Mr. Van Kirk is out of town, can you forward those notes directly to us, please, so that there isn't a delay? Thank you.
Okay. Well, now we'll move on to directors' reports, and we begin this evening with Finance Director, Chief.
Good evening. I wanted to thank everybody for attending the City Council Budget Work Session last Tuesday, the 20th. And just a reminder, we have two more scheduled for the fall. It'll be the third Mondays of September and October, so that'll be Monday, September 18th, and Monday, October 16th. And both will be held at 6:00 PM in the City Council Conference Room. We'll be inviting the directors to go over the 2018 departmental budgets and capital requests in more detail, and please plan on those being approximately two and a half hours each. They'll be longer than the previous budget meetings. Much of the discussion last Tuesday centered around the Rita projections are, the distributions from Rita are our largest source of revenue, and those are recently, the projections for 2017 were decreased. Our original projection in January of this year was 12 and a half million. In March, after the first quarter, it was reduced down to 12.259 million. And most recently, it was in June of 2017, it was reduced down to 11 million. We will be, over the next two months, while council's on recess, I will be emailing the monthly updates as far as the distributions, where we stand, and continuing to communicate the, kind of the new normal in 2017 for the municipal income tax collections. Also, what I, from Rita, well, on the subject of Rita, Rita's in the process late last week, and this week is sending out letters to 2016 non-filers. So basically, this letter will be to individuals that filed taxes with Rita in 2015 that did not file a tax return with Rita in 2016. I cannot stress enough that it is important to respond to this letter if you receive one. It will ask you to check off a reason why you didn't file a 2016 tax return. Maybe you moved out of the city, or the person receiving the letter is now deceased. But please respond to this letter. There's a postage-paid envelope with the letter for you to respond. If you do not respond to this letter, you will receive an administrative subpoena from Rita to appear at City Hall the week of November 27, 27, 2017, where you will be required to show your 2016 tax returns. Please contact Rita directly if you have any questions upon receiving the letter. Their contact information is on there, and their Barrexel office can be reached at 1-800-860-7482. Again, that's 1-800-860-7482. Also, the Finance Department's working to complete the submission of the 2016 CAFER to the GFOA this week, and I will be sending out to council-- to the GFOA this week, and I will be sending out to council whenever that is reviewed by the other state's office, and it is publicly released. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Next up is our law director, Mr. Butler.
Thank you. I just have a brief follow-on report with respect to the Charter Review Commission. Pretty pleased two of our commissioners, Sue Grodek and Jerry Hayes, are here representing the commission, and I was very honored to work with both of them and their colleagues on the commission. One of the underappreciated and overlooked aspects of being a law director is that you get to represent the citizen boards and commissions as well as the city government and those elected officials, those of you who are up there. I really did enjoy this particular stint with the Charter Review Commission. It was a good, very thoughtful group of citizens, and I believe you should all be very proud of your appointees. The commission has tendered its final report to you, dated June 22, that's last Thursday. That'll be on file in the council office, and I suspect and hope that we will have that up on the city's website as well. The voters will be able to see as part of that report the four items that the commission is sending to the voters of Brooklyn, and they worked very hard on those items and many other discussions with respect to the charter throughout this process. So I only wanted to let you and the members of the public know that the commission's report has been filed, and that is their final report. It is, and it will be made part of the public record. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Next up is our service director, Mr. Verba.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. As many of you are aware, Rodon Construction will begin this week with the cleaning and televising of the sewers, which will take an estimated two weeks to complete. Sewer repairs and catch basin replacement will begin in the middle of July and last until the middle of September. The actual pavement repairs, curb and apron replacement will take, start after all the sewer and catch basins have been repaired. The final asphalt surface will be applied the week of November 23rd. On a better note, the pavement repairs will start on Thursday, June 29th, in Rodon Alley, and that is supposed to be completed by the end of July. Please keep in mind that this schedule should be considered tentative. It is dependent on weather, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Verba.
Just a question. When Rodon is done, is it going to be closed to traffic, all traffic, or will it be open to the people that live in that area, or what exactly is going to be the status of Rodon?
Well, everybody for Rodon will have to have access to their drive to be able to get to their, to their home, the way it's right now, and for emergency vehicles as well. As far as I'm aware right now, the actual, we won't actually get into the pavement repairs till probably late August, where you actually see the resurfacing done. It looks like now, the way they have it, they're going to have southbound, there's going to be a detour set up, and the residents will have to follow the detour.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I wondered.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Verba. Well, now we'll move on to legislation. The first item on our agenda this evening is Resolution 2017-8 is up for third reading adoption, adopting the tax budget for fiscal year 2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Debbie Tomusko?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellier?
Yes.
Bart Politski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-50, 53 and 55 are all on second reading and have already been read into the record. Ordinance 2017-57 is on first reading and has been read into the record as well. Ordinance 2017-58, authorizing a contract between Brenda Janice and the city of Brooklyn to provide services as cooked for the senior center luncheon program. We do hope to pass this by emergency this evening, so I'll introduce by all suspend the rules.
So moved.
Second. To suspend the rules, Debbie Tomusko?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellier?
Yes.
Bart Politski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
To adopt, Debbie Tomusko?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellier?
Yes.
Bart Politski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
And lastly, as ordinance 2017-59 is on first reading, has been read into the agenda this evening. This does conclude our agenda this evening. We do anticipate going into executive session to discuss the ongoing labor union negotiations. After executive session is over, we will reconvene, but no further action will be taken. Does anyone, any director, the mayor, any member of council have anything to say before we exercise a motion to move an executive session?
Just very briefly, I would also like to thank the Laurel Garden Club for their assist with the Girl Scouts. I forgot to mention that, and I think the last time that was done was in the 90s, and I was actually part of a group that our kids planted the flowers there in that same spot. So it's really nice to see it rejuvenated. Thank you for your efforts.
All right, so I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adjourn to executive session to discuss matters of labor negotiations. In there, I would like council, the mayor, and our law director.
Second.
To adjourn to executive session, Debbie Tomusko?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Mary Bellier?
Yes.
Bart Politski?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.